Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 9th, 2025, upper board of Alderman meeting. Prayer tonight will be coordinated by Alderman Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow your heads. Gracious and loving God, as we gather tonight at the close of one board service and the start of a new chapter, we give thanks for the dedication of those who have led and for those now stepping forward to serve in this season of light and renewal. Guide us with wisdom, patience, and a spirit of cooperation. We remember all in our community and across our nation who face uncertainty or separation from loved ones. May our work reflect compassion and a deep respect for the dignity of every person. Bless this meeting with clarity, peace, and purpose so that what we do here strengthens the well-being of all who call New Bern home. In your name, amen.
Amen. If you would please stand with me as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Alderman Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Outlaw.
Here.
Board, I believe your agenda and the one I'm looking at might be slightly different. Item number three on my agenda says to approve the agenda, so that's the item that's on the table right now. What's the pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as is. So.
Have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next up is the consent agenda, and really, all I see on that is to approve the minutes. What's the pleasure of the board on item number four?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is item number five, recognition of K-9 Freddie and consider adoptment resolution authorizing the disposition of the retired service animal Chief Gallagher.
So, thank you very much, and it's great to see everybody that showed up tonight just for Freddie. For being here. So, Mayor, Alderman, city leadership, it is with distinct pleasure that I accomplish two things tonight. The first is to recognize the service of one of our four-legged police staff, K-9 Freddie. K-9 Freddie began his service with the New Bern Police Department on January 2019, faithfully serving the citizens of New Bern for almost seven human years. In dog years, that's forty-nine years of police service. Over that time, K-9 Freddie has been deployed over twelve-hundred times, seizing multiple pounds of narcotics, seizing thirty-five firearms, assisting in a hundred-and-fifty-one arrests, apprehending fifteen suspects, and seizing thirty-five thousand dollars worth of U.S. currency. And he has been trained over twenty-five-hundred hours. Not only were these deployments and seizures in service of the city of New Bern, but he was also responsible for multiple community events in which Freddie showed off his skills and his abilities to members of our community during events such as National Night Out for canine demonstrations. What we generally do when a police officer retires is I write a personalized letter in service of our officer. We are doing the same thing for Officer Freddie. And I will read the last paragraph because much of what I've already read is in this letter. Freddie, you are to be congratulated for seven years of dedicated and honorable service to New Bern Police Department, the citizens of New Bern, and the surrounding area, and the only handler you so proudly partnered with, which was Officer Fulton. You have served with distinction within the realm of police work and can now enjoy a long, healthy, and comfortable retirement with your beloved canine handler. I join the men and women of the New Bern Police Department in wishing you a happy and healthy retirement. So with that, my last duty is to ask the board if they would kindly accept the resolution to allow K-9 Freddie to officially retire and become the property and household pet of Officer Fulton and his family.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing disposition of retired service animal K-9 Freddie.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Ferguson.
Alderman Ferguson.
Yes.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Outlaw.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, board, next up is item number six. I know on yours, I think it says it's five, but number six is consider adopting a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, Monica Perry, and the City of New Bern for 2202 Hartford Avenue. We can also do the next two items together, so I'll read those as well. The next item on my agenda is item number seven, which is consider adopting a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity for Craven County, North Carolina, Billy Ray Murray Jr., and Corinthia Murray in the City of New Bern for 2308 Acoch Avenue. And then item number eight is consider adopting a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, NC, Faronda Moulden, and the City of New Bern for 2602 Acoch Avenue. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, on September 24th, 2019, the city approved the conveyance of 2202 Hartford Avenue, 2308 Acoch Avenue, and 2602 Acoch Avenue to Habitat for Humanity for the purpose of developing affordable housing for low and moderate income families. Habitat has subsequently constructed a home on the property and intends to transfer the home to a buyer. By executing a deed to transfer ownership to the buyer, the city will release any rights retained under a transfer and reversion agreement between the city and Habitat.
Does the board have questions?
If no questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat of Humanity for Monica Perry and the City of New Bern, for Billy Ray Murray and Corinthia Murray and the City of New Bern, and for Faronda Moulden and the City of New Bern.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Davis, are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number nine. Are there any appointments for this board?
Mayor, I've had some telephone calls from members of the redevelopment commission recommending that Mr. Phil Hendrick to serve on the redevelopment board. He is a contractor and builder, and they just lost one of their contractors off the board, so it was recommended that he be appointed to the board. Second motion.
I have a motion in a second for Mr. Hendrick. Is there further discussion?
Was there an application submitted?
Yes.
The ones.
I believe, Ms. Clerk, he was in the package you sent us the last time we had some...
That's correct.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Hendrick is appointed. Are there any other appointments?
Mayor, is it appropriate this time to... It's historically a tradition, I don't know that it stays tradition, but it's historically that the first word Alderman sits on the library board. If that is in reference with the date and time of... I'd like to make a motion that Trey Ferguson be appointed to the library board.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Have a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
He's just glad he doesn't have to deal with it, trust me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Mr. Ferguson. Anything else? Any other appointments?
One, two, nine.
Okay, city manager's report.
So, I've got one thing for you, and this is a follow-up to our last board meeting on November 25th. The board conducted a public hearing on a request to rezonate 3328 Lewis Boulevard. That action was tabled until this meeting, pending time for staff to get with the city attorneys to investigate the option of a zoning permit. So after review of the application and the proposed use of property, it was determined that rezoning was not necessary. The applicant has been informed, they have withdrawn their application, and staff is working with the applicant to issue a zoning permit and refund their zoning application fee. Have any questions about that?
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Next, we have comments from outgoing board members. Alderman Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor. Be very brief. I just want to say that before we adjourn, sign and die, I want to express my appreciation to this board over the past month. It's been a privilege to join you and begin working alongside each of you, and I'm grateful for the support and guidance that you've offered, and I look forward to a new term together with some of you and the two that will be joining us. I look forward to building on the progress that's already underway and continuing the work for serving our community with integrity and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Royal.
Thank you, Mayor. The greatest resource of any city is its citizens. For over forty years, I have been active in grassroots movement, and I continue to remain very passionate about improving the quality of life for all people. And so I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of New Bern as Alderman. I wholeheartedly believe that every voice has value, and every citizen not only have the right to be heard, but deserve to be heard. That belief is the underlying principle that guides my decisions. It is my prayer also that this board incoming will practice equity and inclusion in every course of action and will adhere to the five overarching goals that this board established. And I would like to just underscore three of those goals. One goal, we said that we will operate in excellence by fostering transparency. Another goal, we said we will promote a welcoming community by prioritizing community well-being and inclusivity. And then we said we will provide community engagement by increasing resident involvement and connection with local government. If this incoming board will practice what they preach, then our tagline will be realized: Everything comes together here. And while I still have the floor, let me state that it has been an honor to work collectively with this board, even though we have some rough patches with our differences of opinion. I appreciate sharing with you in the oversight of our city. I thank my family for their support during my tenure, and I applaud our hard-working staff and their exemplary teams. And lastly, to our citizens, if I can serve you in any capacity, I am only a phone call away, as Mayor Odom has echoed countless times, once an Alderman, always an Alderman. I pray that God would bless each one of you. I wish you a very Merry Christmas and a very prosperous New Year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I don't feel like I'm outgoing. I feel like the next agenda item, I'm going to be sworn back in, so... But I do want to say thank you to Rick Preel, Hazel Royal, and Johnny Ray for their service to this board during the last few years.
Thank you, sir.
That's all.
All right. Alderman Best.
Yes, I too want to thank the... This board, along with our new addition, Mr. Ferguson here, Alderman Ferguson, and Alderman Outlaw. It's been a pleasure serving alongside with you, all of you, and also the projects that we have that we as a board can have to work together on for the benefit of our citizens. So our citizens, I appreciate each and every one of you that lives within Board Five, and also I appreciate every citizen of this city because this board, we work for every citizen of this city, not just in our prospective wards. So I just want to thank the citizens, and I want to also thank the staff. We do have an extraordinary outstanding staff. They all work hard for us. They make us look good. We can't do this by ourselves. They make us look good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Outlaw.
Mayor, it's been a real pleasure to work with the outgoing board, and I look forward to working with the incoming board.
Okay. I appreciate the effort that this current board put in and for the outgoing members. Wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. At this time, I would entertain a motion to sign and die.
So, no, Mayor, a second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Okay, at this time, Superior Court Judge Gus Willis is going to swear in Trey Ferguson All right, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, Trey Ferguson, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Trey Ferguson, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Alderman of the City of New Bern, so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Trey Ferguson, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Sign two copies. You've got more work to do. You've got three. Your official, congratulations. Okay, Judge, you can stay right there because you are going to administer the oath to Alderman Bobby Astor. Alderman Astor, if you will, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, Bobby Astor, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Bobby Astor, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Alderman of the City of New Bern, so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Bobby Astor, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. One more time. Two copies. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And one more for you, Judge, will be Mr. Dana Outlaw. All right. Alderman, if you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. There we go. Ready? All right. Do you, Dana Outlaw, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Dana Outlaw, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Alderman of the City of New Bern, so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Dana Outlaw, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? Congratulations. Thank you. Judge, we appreciate you doing that for us. Sir, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity as a native New Bernian and a member of the judiciary, as your honor is well aware, this is... This building started its life as a courthouse, so to be able to complete an official act here in this building is very meaningful to me, and I appreciate you and Alderman Astor, Alderman Ferguson, and Alderman Outlaw giving me that opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge.
Okay, next, Ms. Letitia Bell will be administering the oath of office to Alderman
And this Bible is a hundred and two years old, and it belongs to Ms. Annie B. Gibbs, an educator here in Craven County. Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you, Sharon C. Bryant, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Sharon C. Bryant, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Alderman of the City of New Bern, so help you God?
I will.
Do you, Sharon C. Bryant, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are and may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Okay, next up, our very own city clerk, Ms. Brenda Blanco, will administer the oath of office to Ms. Laney White, Ward Four.
You'll put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, Laney White, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Laney White, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Alderman of the City of New Bern, so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Laney White, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
And last, and certainly not least, is Alderman Barbara Beth for Ward Five.
You put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, Barbara Beth, solemnly...
Do you, Barbara Best, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Barbara Best, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office, Alderman of the City of New Bern, so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Barbara Best, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will open up the December 9, 2025 New Bern Board of Aldermen meeting, and tonight, I've asked my friend and pastor Scott Cockhill to deliver opening prayer.
Sir. Let's bring him. Father, thank you so much for the privilege to be here. Lord, we come to you with grateful hearts for so many things, but, Lord, most of all, we thank you for Jesus. We thank you for the gift of salvation. We thank you for the hope and promise of heaven. We thank you for grace and mercy that carries us through each day.
Yes, Lord.
And, Lord, we thank you that even in those moments when we are not faithful to you, you are certainly faithful to us.
Yes.
Lord, thank you for the privilege to live in such a great city and be surrounded by incredible people, and, Lord, the opportunity for these who sit before me today, the opportunity they have to lead, and I pray for them tonight, and I pray over them. I pray that you would give them a spirit of humility and a spirit of wisdom. I pray you'll give them strength for the days ahead and that you will give them unity of heart-mind. I pray that the word of God would be the lamp unto their feet and the light unto their path. And so, I think everyone here wants great things for our city, and so, we pray that you would instill in our leaders now what this town needs moving forward. Lord, we live in an interesting day, but I'm glad that our hope is not in the day. Our hope is in the one who made the day. And so, we continue to hope in you. Our faith is strong, and we long to see you one day. And so, bless this evening, and thank you for it in Jesus' name.
Amen.
If you're able to stand, please do so, and we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Ferguson?
Here.
Alderman Bryant?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman White?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Present.
Alderman Outlaw?
Here.
Okay, Board, item number five is to approve the agenda. Any changes you'd like to make?
May I make a motion when we approve the agenda as is? Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as is. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next, we will have comments from the new board members. We'll start with Alderman Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I am grateful for the trust placed in me by the Ward One voters, and I am honored to begin this term. Over the past month, I've had the opportunity to work with many of you and our staff, and I am so encouraged by the dedication I see every day by our staff, and I thank you for that. As we look ahead, my commitment is simple. I want to work with each of you to move New Bern forward responsibly, thoughtfully, and with a focus on the long-term well-being of our community. I'm ready to get to work together on the opportunities and challenges before us, and I appreciate the partnership of this board as we begin this next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bryant?
Sitting here today is an honor, and I want to begin by thanking the resident of Ward Two for trusting me with this responsibility. I don't take your confidence lightly. This seat represents service, accountability, and the people who make our community what it is. Ward Two has a long history, one built on resilience, culture, and deep sense of pride. I'm here to make sure that the history is respected and that our future reflects the voices and needs of people who live here. I also want to thank my family, my friends, my campaign team. Your support, your patience, encouragement carried me through this journey. I am grateful for every sacrifice, every conversation, and every moment you stood with me. As your Alderman woman, I am committed to show up, listen, and work alongside my colleagues to make sure every decision we make truly moves this city forward. My focus is on transparency, fairness, and creating opportunities that strengthen families, supporting our neighbors, supporting our neighbors and our neighborhoods, and making Ward Two a place where people feel seen, heard, and valued. I am grateful for this moment, grateful for this community, and ready to get to work. My last comment, on the behalf of Pauline White, who has passed on, if it was not for her, I would not be sitting in this seat today. So, Pauline, rest in peace. Lastly, I am grateful for this moment, again grateful for this community, and ready to get to work. Thank you for this chance.
Alderman Astor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to first start by saying thank you to the citizens of Ward Three. I still think I have the best ward of all. You have the easiest one to get elected. Let's be true, yes. And I also have to thank my family, especially my wife, for putting up with all the phone calls and all the times I have to get up and run down and check on somebody's ditch that's not draining properly or somebody that has a pothole in the road. So, thank you, Jean, and kids. Thanks.
Alderman White?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank everybody who is here in support, not only of me and the rest of the Aldermen and the Mayor, but those of you who are here in support of this city. I am honored and feel that it's a privilege to be a voice for you, and I want to echo the words of Pastor Royal. Every voice has value, and I will work hard to make sure that everybody's voice is represented in my ward and that the needs of this city will be considered on this board. I will offer cooperation, collaboration, and compassion to the entire city and to this board. I don't take this lightly, and thank you so much, all of you.
Alderman Best?
I want to sincerely thank my constituents of Ward Five for trusting in me, believing in me, and supporting me, came out and voted for me and put me back in office. We have a lot of work to do. We, as a board, have a lot of work to do for this city, for the entire city. All of our citizens that live in this city, we represent you, not just our prospective wards, but we represent every citizen, and I promise to do within my powers what I can do for Ward Five alongside with the help of this board, that we have a lot of projects coming forth, not a lot of projects that is not just consistent in one ward but throughout this city. So, we all must work together, and let's all let bygones be bygones, that we look forward, work together, and respect each other, and that's what I... Mostly, that's what I am trying to do, will continue to do, and I hope this board, city staff, and our citizens, we all work together because we have to do it together. Thank you.
Alderman Outlaw?
I would just would like to thank the citizens of the City of New Bern and Ward Six that have in the past supported me. I'd like to lift this up to Christ the Lord. I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm not new to the rodeo, and part of that is that, you know, when you look back, there's a couple of things real quickly I'd like to say. One is that just all of a sudden, just I know where sometimes when you're up here, your emotions can get you, and you won't think they will, but just at the right time, you can just get emotional. So, I want to leave you with this, that being an old rodeo man, I've seen a lot of things going on, as Barbara's mentioning, but if I was going to redo my past seventeen years of doing this, in this room right here, the most important thing to lock on, and this is a fact, is that picture right there. And I was honored enough to know Mayor Leander Morgan. I knew him before he was mayor. I knew him when he was an Alderman. I knew him when he ran for mayor in loss. I knew how gracious he was. I knew how much he had done in the community. I knew how iconic he was to Hazel Royal, me, and others at New Bern High School. And through the worst of times and the best of times, Barbara, I never saw Mayor Morgan not look like that, and that's what all of us are supposed to do up here, is we're supposed to love our neighbor and... And look at that picture right there. And be that, and I will try to do that for the next four years. I will try to honor that photo, that portrait right there, of one of the biggest leaders that ever led this city, Mayor Leander Morgan. Thank you.
I would also like to reiterate, it's really hard to repeat what everybody else has said, but thank you to the voters for their trust, their confidence, and me continuing to lead this city for the next term. As Alderman Best mentioned, this is a news flash for all of you. Everything that we vote on will not be unanimous. There will be some disagreements. I assure you of that, but I do believe that each and every person on this board is sitting here because they wanted to do the right thing, they have the best of intentions, and they want to see the city move forward. I said this, I guess it was about three years ago, the election is over, it's time to govern. As far as the comments, the comments are over, it's time for action. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion for reception.
Mayor, I make a motion that we take a fifteen-minute break for reception.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Okay, we are back in session. All right, next item on the agenda is item number seven, Requesting potatoes, citizens. Madam Clerk? First up is Ms. Cleopatra Hargett-Lalton.
Good evening, Mayor Odom.
Good evening.
Councilmembers, I'm sorry, I'm from DC, so all the women and men and community members, honored elected officials. My name is Cleopatra Hargett-Lalton. I'm a product of these schools of New Bern, Craven County, and I moved back here four years ago to save the famous land. I was invited here by all of the women royal to say goodbye to her and to congratulate her on her forty years of service in this city. I knew her when she was in high school. She and my sister used to be buddies and pals, and I had no idea that she had risen to such greatness in New Bern. I congratulate her on having the audacity to start a church in our community of Duffy Field, and the church has thrived. And in forty years, she has really done a phenomenal job of representing us, especially the Duffy Field community in this city. So, my hat's off to her and all the work she has done to represent our rights and privileges in Duffy Field as well as in the whole city. She has joined in with me, as I have been back four years, to try to save our history here. When I got back four years ago, I found that they were trying to do some things to JT Bob, my alma mater. I'm like, oh, no, that's our history. We have to save it. JT Bob is now an award-winning school that everybody brags about. I went over and helped the principal myself to do what she had to do to get that school in order. I've been an educator all over the world. I wrote PL 94142, Education of the Handicap on Hill. I trained teachers at three universities in the District of Columbia, worked with five males there to build University of the District of Columbia, the first land-grant college in the District of Columbia. I also worked with Unisrivar, who's a member of the Kennedy Clan, to develop Special Olympics. God has been good to this little girl who was born in Coates City, North Carolina, whose mother named her, whose grandmother named her Cleopatra, who grew up on a plantation in Pollesfield. I have to congratulate others too, whose lives have touched mine and I've touched theirs. Since I've been back for four years, Sharon is sitting there because I worked with her. Congratulations, Sharon. Barbara Best has been just a wonderful colleague. We developed a community Neighborhood Watch to try to help with the drug problems and others in our community, of them, in our community. She and I have been shoulder to shoulder, but we don't let folk know who we know, and so we'll continue to do that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, of course, Mayor Odom. I didn't know him, but I tried to do research and find out who people are, and he has stood shoulder to shoulder with us and attended our efforts to save African-American history in this city. It's all of our history. We're now trying to save West Street, trying to build a museum there. It was the first school for free slaves. I admonish all of you to join us in saving our history. It's all of our history. As all the women best said, let the past be the past. Mayor Odom, thank you for coming to our first fundraiser at The Flame several weeks ago. Together we stand. This is what I told the school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on. I'll be here watching, waiting, and doing what I can to assist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lalton.
Next is Pat Dixon. Next is Pat Dixon.
Good evening, Mayor, board members. First of all, my name is Pat Dixon, and I'm a native New Bernian. I would like to first thank you for the opportunity to be here, just to say a couple of words with you. Congratulations to the incoming new board. We pray that, you know, you will continue, that you will go forth with integrity and that you go forth with compassion. You will go forth with transparency, and you will hear what the people has to say, and you will give an ear to the voice of those in our city, those in the communities, those in the neighborhoods, because we all make the city of New Bern. I stood up, most of all, to give thanks to Hazel Royal, Alderman Hazel Royal, for the years that she has been on the board of Alderman, the light that she's been, the way that she gave a voice to those who was in Ward Two. I'm a product of Ward Two. And I'd like to thank her for her commitment to make sure that the people's voices were heard, and if they did not speak, she gave them a voice, because she wanted everybody to know what was going on. She wanted everybody to know that there was transparency. She wanted everybody to know that she was there to be a help unto them. So, I'd just like to just say congratulations to Alderman Hazel Royal for all the good things that she have done the past years, that she's been our Alder Woman, Alder Woman. And so, we know that this is not her end, that she will continue to be a voice for others. She will continue to, you know, to be a help, and she will continue to be there for all of you as you continue to go forth and to do that which is a part of being an Alderman for the city of New Bern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is David French.
I haven't started yet. We said it, because I'm going to do it in four. No, it's at three forty-nine. I'm David French, 104 Johnson Street. Why am I here yet again? I am here because my dear cousin Mary Ann never got to go back home. I am here because former Governor Roy Cooper absolutely failed the Hurricane Florence flood survivors in eastern North Carolina. I am here because Public Safety Secretary Eddie Buffett absolutely failed us. I am here because the former director of NCOR, Rebuild NC HUD, Laura Hogg, said her cohorts of Matthew Arling, Prior Gibson, Matthew Cullen, and all their cohorts absolutely failed us. I am here, very sadly, because our North Carolina state rep, Steve Tyson, who was a great leader after Hurricane Florence, and North Carolina State Senator Bob Brinson absolutely failed us. They are now scared of the truth I speak and both hide behind their lechus lady of attorneys that we, the people, pay for. Shame. Tyson and Brinson were repeatedly asked to contact U.S. Representative Murphy directly so that he can contact HUD Secretary Turner and President Trump, but Tyson and Brinson refused. Why? Yet, they have time to host Murphy at fundraisers, parades, and other events here in New Bern and Craven County, but Murphy doesn't have time to meet me at my Hurricane Florence flooded uninhabitable home to help me. Why? Shame. I am here because former North Carolina Attorney General Josh Stein failed to investigate Rebuild NC during eight long years. As governor, he refuses to bring me back into the Rebuild NC program from which I was illegally and fraudulently removed. If Tyson and Brinson were Democrats, would I be treated differently by Cooper, Stein, and the Rebuild NC cohorts? It is now a felony in North Carolina to treat people differently about disaster recovery assistance based on political affiliation. If I was someone different, would I have even been illegally and fraudulently removed? I am here because the Republican-controlled North Carolina legislature absolutely failed to give the proper oversight of the hurricane recovery of Matthew and Florence. They must take responsibility and make us whole. We, the people, have about 3.6 billion in the North Carolina Rainy Day Fund. Well, it is a hurricane of homelessness of thousands of us who are still not back home in ENC and WNC. I am here because I did the proper thing, and I went to my elected officials and later to the media to expose the absolute failure of Rebuild NC and have been discriminated against, disenfranchised, and derided for doing so. Why? I am here because Rebuild NC lied about the City of New Bern's Historic Preservation Commission, saying it was the HPC's fault that our home design was not approved. It is not the City of New Bern's fault, but it's 100% Rebuild NC's fault for not adhering to all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines. This absolute lie by Rebuild NC, if left unchallenged, can have a devastating precedent, not only for me, but also future New Bern Historic District residents receiving federal and state disaster recovery assistance. The City of New Bern must stand up for me and its residents. The city has a legal and fiduciary duty to us. Mayor Odom and Board of Aldermen, will you fulfill your oaths you just made? Listen, I'm about to lose everything, my uninhabitable home, my temporary apartment, and my belongings in storage due to the absolute failure of those previously named. Craven County is ready to elevate and repair my home. They have been waiting for months for Rebuild to transfer the funds which were approved in 2023. It is time for Governor Stein to do the right thing and bring me back in and restore the storage and stipends. As to my storage, I desire to pay Alderman Outlaw. I have asked him numerous times to meet with me about my storage, but he continues to hide behind his storage management company, and that has allowed them to foreclose upon me three or four times. He has been paid thousands of federal HUD funds for my storage. As a former mayor, he worked with me, but once out of office, he refused to do so. Why? As a professing Christian, will he meet with me to work this out? As you all spend time with your families and friends in your safe and secure homes this Christmas, remember when you're opening your presents and eating your fill that there are thousands of your fellow residents here in ENC who are still not back home over seven very long years later. I am here because I just want to go home, and the City of New Bern must stand with me.
Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you, sir.
And I would like an answer from Outlaw. Thank you. Have a good day. Next up is Ms. Krishandra Royal-Jones.
Good evening. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to congratulate everyone on their win, and I would like to thank those who served this city well, as well as Alderman Best for our award. Tonight, I want to give special recognition to the beautiful woman who gave me life, my mom, Alderman Royal. We don't, we didn't know what this would look like, but thank you for serving your city well. You stood up for what was right before, during, and will after. It really opened our eyes to so many people. So many people had things to say, so many people took to social media, so many subliminal messages. But through it all, you still stood for what you believed. You prayed, and you stayed constant to what you believed. And so, for that, I do want to say thank you. And it doesn't matter where you go or what you do, I'm going to always protect you at all costs. You know that, and so does everybody else. Your family, your church, and I love you more. And so, I am so grateful, and I am so honored to have you as my mom. I love you more than anything. I love you more than life itself. No matter what other people said, no matter what other people think, know that you are the best. And so, with myself, my brother, my sister, and all of the family, our church, Abundant Life Miracle Center, we all want to say that we love you. Your time is over, so we are ready for you to come home.
Okay, that's all the petition of citizens, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does the board have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Ferguson.
Alderman Ferguson?
Yes.
Alderman Bryant?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Outlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number fourteen, Appointment of Mayor Pro Tem and the Administration of that Oath. What's the pleasures of the board on item number fourteen?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to approve Alderman Bobby Astor as Mayor Pro Tem for the ensuing year.
We have a motion for Alderman Astor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alderman Astor, if you would, step down and do another oath, sir. Thank you.
Put your left hand on the Bible and read it right. Do you, Bobby Astor, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States so help you God?
I do.
Do you, Bobby Astor, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, that you faithfully discharge the duties of your offices as Mayor Pro Tem for the City of New Bern so help you God?
I do.
And do you, Bobby Astor, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and abilities so help you God?
I do.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, Board, next is item number fifteen, and that is to consider a motion calling for a board retreat on January seventh, two thousand twenty-six, at eight thirty a.m. at the New Bern Area Chamber of Commerce.
So moved.
Sir.
Have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With respect to that, Ms. Mayor, could you, this, the new board, and anybody having input, is the format, the length, the subject matter?
Yes, sir. We have a variety of topics that we're going to be discussing, and I can give you some examples of some of those, but we anticipate this lasting majority of the day. Hold on one second. I'll give you some of the topics that we have on there. One is talk about current projects that are going on to make sure the entire board is aware of those. We're going to talk about bond projects and steps moving forward for that. We're going to have a discussion about the electric infrastructure, our budget process for FY twenty-seven, the rules of procedure. If the board has any changes they'd like to make, we'll discuss those at that time. Goals and objectives of the new board for the next term. Any special projects that the governing board may want to tackle during the term. We're going to review advisory boards and discussion of that. We're going to look at... We're also going to get an update on the renewed burn land use ordinance update as well as that and several other topics. So, it will be a busy day and a lot of good information, and we look forward to the conversation with the board.
Okay, and if any of the aldermen, we want to give any input, you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? That is all on this agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion. Do we have a second? What?
Did you vote on it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I didn't catch it.
Yeah, sorry. We did a voice vote.
Okay.
For the record, Alderman Best wasn't here, if you need to make note of that when we did the vote. I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.